Let's call the Woodbury Select Board meeting. The quarter on Monday, August 11th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes.
All right.
Alex Helt.
All right. And Alex, would you be comfortable going on to public comment?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other amendments?
Um. There's one thing I forgot to put, maybe we can do it under Robin's report. Uh, she wanted a response on that chimney business.
Yep.
And she didn't bring that up. And we also talked about the school parking lot. I don't know if anybody got a chance to follow up on that.
Yeah, Robin did. It's our responsibility, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we can talk about that maybe under the road report or?
School parking lot. All right. There are no other adjustments. We'll move on to approving the minutes from the July meeting and the August 4th special meeting. I didn't see minutes for the August 4th special meeting.
Okay, well.
Were they sent?
They are right here.
Let me take a second.
Okay, here are the, here are the.
Not sure why. Those didn't come. I did read these. My apologies. Yep.
Here are the original signatures.
That's ridiculous.
That's the really one.
Is there a, is there a motion regarding the minutes from July and August 4th?
I'll make a motion to approve both minutes.
As written.
July 28th and August 4th? Second?
August, July 28th and August 4th. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passed. Minutes are approved. Today's date is?
11.
Thank you, Diana. And moving on to public comment.
Yeah, hi, thank you. I'm, um, Alex Helt. I am, I just wanted to make a public comment about a tragic event that happened in Woodbury. I'm sure most of you know, but on June 19th, Tina Dagel, not a member of our community, but in Hardwick was found dead, um, on the side of Route 14. And, um, she was found by my mother, which is kind of why I'm here because that's, well, not somebody I knew. I didn't know Tina. She was, um, has become kind of part of our life in this moment because it's been a pretty, pretty harrowing few months after this. Uh, I think we know now that she was murdered, which is pretty terrible and scary. And there's a lot of speculation on what the cause was and that's something we, or who did it, I guess. We don't know for certain, but that's an ongoing investigation. Um, so I just felt compelled to kind of bring that into the public light a little bit more because of the role that my mom and our families had. I don't think there's anything that we can do about it, but I just want to make sure that we don't forget about these, um, these events. It seems like it's gone a little bit under the radar, or at least the people I've been talking to, it seems like it's, um, it's a little bit of old news and it feels unfortunate because it's, um, you know, it's members of our community who are suffering and grieving and it kind of affects us all, both directly and indirectly. And there's certainly a public safety issue, but there's also just a human compassion issue. And, um, so I'm thinking of them. I'm thinking of the Katon and Dagel families. Uh, I think if there's any silver lining for me, it's that I've gotten to know them a bit more. Um, Marie Dagel, or yeah, Marie Katon, Tina's mother, who lives in, uh, in Woodbury and is a member of, uh, I don't know, she's still on the, the, um.
She's on the food pantry.
Yeah, the food pantry. I've gotten to know her better because of this, um, as a neighbor of ours. And, um, yeah, it's just, it's, it's really sad. It's scary. It's unfortunate. And, um, I don't think there's anything we can do, you know? But, um, just being aware of that and reaching out to people if they need support, I, I think is, is kind of the right thing to do. So I'm here just to, to say that.
I think, maybe Tina grew up here?
Yes.
Does she?
Did she?
Well, she is, you know, she ended up in Hardwick.
Yeah. Did she go, did she go to Woodbury?
Yeah, she was a year ahead of my son.
Was she?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so.
So no response yet from the police lately, nothing?
Yeah, not that I know of. I've been in touch with the, and the investigator and they, you know, the state police have been, I think, even fairly responsive, but they can't really tell us much. I think it's an ongoing investigation. I think there's two people on the case, two detectives. Um, yeah, um, I think, I mean, I won't make a lot of comment about the speculation that's whirling around, but there's a lot of, um, there is a lot of it in terms of how it happened and who did it. And that's also one of these things that just sort of feels strange to, to like sort of, sort of know what's going on and not really be able to do anything about it, even though it just feels like it's just this lingering unease and sadness. Yeah.
And probably, I think more so from the people in Hardwick who are, you know, neighbors.
Neighbors, right.
Both the people, huh?
Exactly.
Friends of Tanya's and.
Yeah.
I mean Tina's.
Yeah, John is his sister, right? So I think that's it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ellen.
Super tragic. And, um, I guess let us know if there's anything that we can do too.
Yeah.
But I, I appreciate the sentiment bringing it up.
Yeah, thanks.
Public comment.
I did think, I did sort of think about whether there was anything that was being like, that the select board could do as a formal body of the town. Um, I talked to Opie, um, you know, the town manager about it in Hardwick, and he said, there's not, you know, so don't like make it a pressure thing that we need to, that the town capital needs to do anything about it because there's not really, I don't think that can be done. So.
I asked Robin to keep an eye out in case they asked about a cemetery lot, but I guess they've got a place in Hardwick.
The Sedan Nash.
And we could have, we could have donated that, but I guess we, it sounds like they have a place already.
Yeah, that's what, uh, Tina's daughter told us that they were gonna bury her in Hardwick, I don't know, cemetery, but yeah. Yeah. So that's my comment on that.
And expressed like, uh, I guess, uh, maybe sympathy is the wrong word, but tikkaki, you know, I think that's probably pretty traumatic.
Yeah, thanks. It was. I think the people that deal with those kind of events, I honestly, I also just want to say thank you to the, to our first responders, you know, they were the, you know, the fire departments, the first on the scene. And unfortunately, it wasn't in time to do anything about it, but just gave me another moment to be really appreciative of the fact that we had those, those folks volunteering to do this, having really hard work to do this regularly. And so for somebody like my mom who doesn't come across a dead body or dead person, it's, uh, that's a, that's a, that is a tragic event. It's a traumatic event, but for them it's not, you know, that's, they're trained, they're experienced. Or maybe they can manage it in a different way. I don't know. But yeah.
Yeah, they always have counseling after something like that also.
They do. That's great. Where does that happen? Do you know?
Uh, Paul normally sets it up.
Yeah.
And normally anybody that has any contact with it, he will also invite them to it.
Wow.
So they might not have.
Yeah, interesting. That's good to know. I, I, maybe I'll ask Paul about that because, um, because she was kind of looking around to talk to people about that specific kind of event, not just a general, rent counselor, therapists, but like those kind of particular events.
Yeah, I would talk to Paul.
Yeah, that's a good tip. Thank you. Yeah. So if I have the floor, I have one other question slash comment, which sort of came up about the very off topic, but the, um, the outdoor classroom? I'm just curious if there's, if anybody has any.
We're gonna have an update on that.
Oh, right. Okay, so.
The update just walked in. I don't know if you want to wait until he gets on the agenda or?
Maybe we'll wait, yeah.
You just walked in.
I, I can do that really quickly.
Okay, sure, yeah.
So there really isn't an update. I, I sent an email to Jared asking him about, uh, the school classroom and to Joe Houston. I haven't heard back from either one of them. I sent those last week. But, uh, I was told in the spring when the subject came up that it would get built this summer, and I haven't seen any sign that it will. So, um, and then I have a suggestion about that. Um, if they aren't gonna build it, I think we should try to get our ERPA from the school and use it maybe for the town hall or something else. Because it just doesn't seem to be, this kind of gets kicked out of the reef sometimes. So. And it's sort of become, you know, it was a nice kind of town school thing in the beginning. And now it just seems to be totally in the hands of the school and without really much talent. But I have no idea whether they're gonna go with the old sign that Michael Sadler had done. He was part of that early committee. Um, so that's not much of an update other than that nothing's happening.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know what the status would be if we had to take that money back. I don't think ARPA is checking up on us anymore. Have you heard any requests for any auditing or anything like that?
The only thing, um, that, that I've seen come across my desk is reporting on any funds that were left over, but since we don't have any and we haven't had any, we haven't had any reporting. Um, so I think if we do get funds back, then we will have to then get back into the swing of reporting on them.
I'm just curious, does anybody remember that figure? Like how much money?
It's like fifteen thousand, I think.
That's sort of what's in my memory, yeah.
You'd say fifteen?
Fifteen, yeah.
Was there another source of funding? It, that doesn't sound like much.
Um, in the town coffers called the school fund. I think it's one of the.
Oh, that eight thousand dollars we were looking at?
Yeah, we were gonna kind of pass that on to this project too, but I don't think that ever happened.
No, good. We still have it.
Yeah, we still have that.
It can disappear into the OSSU.
And the, um, and, um, the Woodbury Fund put money into that too, right?
Hmm, I don't think, yeah. Nothing has been spent. They might have agreed to it.
I think there was an agreement together. I think it was granted or they got, actually, so that's, that is available.
And thank you for taking over on that.
Yeah.
So what would be the next steps in terms of the classroom? Just wait to hear from Darren?
Well, um, Joe Houston, or Houston, I'm not quite sure how he pronounces his last name. Um, he's kind of the head of OSSU school maintenance, construction, et cetera. Kind of what Larry Eldredge was until he retired. So he's the one that told me that it would get built this summer when I asked him about that last.
He's probably pretty busy with keeping the elementary school together.
Right, those are major projects. So, um, so I'll just wait to try to hear something complained and kind of, maybe send another email.
Doesn't seem any reason to push it because.
No.
You know, if it's still a possibility, it's a good thing.
Thanks, Michael. Carol, we're in public comment. If you are here for such.
I'm just here to be happy and I do not have bridge envy anymore. I tell you all that. You would not believe my, the construction up there. And I know all of you worked really, really hard. So I just baked all day in a hot seat for you. So enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Told it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy it.
Yeah.
Don't fall off.
Right.
Fall off the bridge.
Those are pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Construction's, yeah.
Oh, I thought you meant her.
Eldredge is.
Yeah, it is pretty amazing.
All right. Well, if there's no other public comment, unless John, you have anything else other than? Yeah.
I just want to say, so I was at the meeting after the flooding where Carol was in a pretty driven spot in a lot of ways, and you threw her lifeline, made a temporary bridge. Yeah. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the town clerk's report.
Have you guys made up any decisions on the chimney at the town office?
You know, we have not talked about it since the last meeting, um, which, not sure when we're supposed to talk about it outside of meetings because I like to public meetings.
We did talk about it at the last meeting. We, we just chatted about the fact that if we're gonna do the one to take down the whole chimney, we probably want to do it before the roof repair, but.
Do we want to talk about them more now?
Sure. It's, it's just two options. Or take the chimney down to the roof line or cap it off.
Four, four thousand six hundred forty dollars.
Or.
And then to repair the chimney so no water gets into the building is three thousand one ninety-five and twenty-three cents.
I'd be inclined to cap it and repair it personally.
Yeah, I do too.
Because if you take it down, would you ever be able to put another chimney back there?
Be a pain because the roof would be going over it. It'd be filling the hole in and then, I mean, it could, but I would probably be inclined just to repair it and keep it.
So maybe I misunderstood. Uh, the four thousand six hundred forty, that was to take it down and cap and like, and remove it completely?
Below the roof line, not.
Below the roof line.
Am I right? So not the whole chimney?
Remove the chimney below the roof line.
Okay.
Not take the whole thing out of the basement, the rest of it?
Sorry, I misunderstood. I thought we were gonna rebuild that chimney for, um, but that rebuilding is thirty-one hundred, thirty-two hundred or something like that.
No, that's just to.
That's to repair the current undered bricks.
Yeah, I would agree. I think it makes sense to just, to repair.
Well, we talked about when we were replacing the heating system, we got a sort of a rough estimate of what it would cost to make the chimney usable again. And that was a lot more than four thousand dollars. It was a lot of money.
Yeah, okay.
Why we decided to go with the gas.
All right. I would agree. I think repair the chimney is the way to go rather than remove it.
And it is, this includes, um, it says installing a stainless steel chase cove over the top of the chimney. So I'm assuming it will look different, like we won't see the chimney anymore. We'll see a metal.
Well, I mean, it's still gonna be, I mean, the metal thing is like just, um. Oh, right, the cap?
I'm not sure.
Some fancy chase cove.
Over the top of the chimney? Maybe it's just a cap? I was, I was kind of, maybe it's, I was, I guess, reading it, thinking that it like covered the whole thing. I may be wrong, but there.
It's like a little hat.
Okay.
I think.
I, if it is what I'm now thinking of, that makes sense. Just to prevent water from coming down the hole?
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, so they might put some flashing around where it goes into the roof, but.
And when the roof is redone, those guys will need to flash it appropriately. So is that enough?
You're just gonna let me know which one that you want to go with and I can call them and get it scheduled?
The repair.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Robin.
I think everybody is in agreement, right?
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
And we have an access permit for a driveway in West Woodbury that needs slightly more of a go along.
Ashton Tibbetts. So you looked at this?
I did.
And it's okay?
Designed it.
Yeah. I mean, I, I see a driveway going in.
Yeah.
When I was checking roads and I'm like, this looks new.
Oh.
So I asked at the office if there was Google.
A zoning, okay.
And we got ahold of, hold of the people. And I said, you gotta have a curb cap permit. So they did, and that's that.
Okay.
I, I had to correct their calvert size. They had like a ten inch calvert in there in place. They hadn't covered it up or nothing, but they just had it in place.
Oh, whoops.
And it needs to be a fifteen. That's the minimum standard size. So they're happy to do that. And that's why I put on the permit. So, uh, sight distance is fine. Everything, everything looks fine.
Did they say anything about getting a zoning permit or? Not to you, huh?
That's not, that's not what I feel.
I know, but, you know.
But I think they're, I think they're working on building permits also.
Oh, he is working on building permits.
I believe so.
I'm pretty sure he brought the information to the office that we sent on to Paul.
Oh, oh, okay. So he did send this one in?
Yes, I'm pretty sure of it.
Okay.
They seem like a very young, nice young couple. So I got, it seemed like they're trying to do the right thing. So I think they just knew that they had to have a curb cap permit.
Sure.
And so now they do.
The two of us? Do you want us to enter the checklist?
And Chris and Lindsay, did you get my email about the checklist?
I did get the email about the checklist.
Can you remind me?
We go over the checklist every other year, non-election years, to go through to see if there's people on there that should be taken off from our checklist.
Okay.
Now, when we have a general election, the state is not paying postage for ballots that aren't going anywhere.
I don't remember seeing your email. Um, so when you want us to just go through these and get them back to you?
We're having a meeting Wednesday night, six o'clock here.
That where's the place to come to?
Yeah.
Okay. Love you, Karen.
Yeah, I, I didn't get the first email either because I didn't know my new email was actually working. Because I was waiting to, to go through the process to, to give it, set up whatever Skip, uh, Skip Markasani had given me this, you know, page of stuff. And I just saw this little thing on the top of my screen, just emails. I clicked on it and there it was. It was already there. I didn't even have to do anything. Now I just have to check it all the time.
The first time I sent it out, I sent it out to the new emails that you guys have. Because when the last meeting we had down to the office, Chris said they were up and running. So that's where I sent them. But I sent a reminder out this morning and you got it to both your new and your old.
Does that work?
Have you, have you guys been using your?
I have very good intentions of using it and I haven't even.
So there are like, there are like thirteen people on the Board of Civil Authority, right? So a quorum for that, they need to have at least seven, eight would be good.
I have nine people. I have nine people.
On the Board of Civil Authority?
Yeah, the five justices of peace.
Oh, you're right.
You, three, myself.
The listers aren't, I was thinking Board of Tax Abatements, sorry. So, listers, okay. So then we need at least five.
Matt, have you made any decisions on if Pam is gonna be allowed to get sit time, personal time, holiday, vacation?
We also have not discussed that, but we can put it on, yeah, we haven't done that yet. So, um, it will be on a future, I'm gonna put it on future agenda.
And you approved my rate increase as of July 14th. Does that mean that it tracked to active?
To July 14th?
Thanks.
That's why I disagree.
I guess so, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, question. So, Robin, when we have discussed it, the rate that should not, the way that we've done it and it has, it should not be done until it's been any approval by the select board, which I just received.
Well, that's the signed minutes, but they actually approved it on July 14th.
So what we're saying is that we're.
So the difference between my old rate and my new rate from July 14th until last week's paycheck.
Okay, so you'll be, you'll be cut a new check for the difference. That's what we're saying?
That makes sense to me, or however is best, whatever costs.
Do another, um, timesheet or whatever.
And I believe that is all I have. Yep, I think that's it for me.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you.
Lily.
Great. Do you all have a packet?
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect. Wonderful.
I put this on the agenda twice because at some point we'll need a further discussion. So I put, you know, anyway.
I put the tax rate down on 17.
We can start talking about it now.
Do we want to wait in, for later? Is that what you're saying, Diana?
I think that's up to, I think it depends on if everybody else wants to stay to have that conversation.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah, I've got a couple other things to go over, um, which should be quick. And I'm worried it happens to have us move to the tax rate discussion to the end of the meeting.
For 7:20?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do that then, in case other folks don't want to stay to listen to that discussion, they can, I think, scoot out.
Cool, perfect. Um, so these are our brand new financial reports. Um, so in it you'll find our current bank statement. So this is essentially the cash we have available sitting in our bank and updated fund balances. So what's kind of sitting in each one of the individual funds, general, highway, turf, so on and so forth. Throughout the comparative budget, so that starts on page one, right after the funds report, um, you'll see a whole bunch of lines. The only thing that we really need you guys to pay attention to are the highlighted item lines. Um, so what we're focusing on here is really being able to find the specific item, item, that, sorry, it's been a long day and it's really hot. Uh, the specific item lines that the select board needs to pay attention to. Um, for this month, really the only thing that we're looking at is RV Technology. Um, so they're already headed pretty high up. Um, in the first month of the fiscal year, um, our total budget for them, um, for FY '26 is nine thousand dollars, and we're already up past two thousand dollars within the first.
What, we're past what?
We're already over two thousand dollars for the first, just the first billing cycle for our twelve.
Mostly billable hours for, um, taking our computers.
For the most part, it looks like it does.
Yeah. So that should be a one time.
It is true, Diana. The second one from the bottom.
That should be a one time.
Yes, that's so.
Yeah.
Skip, like I've said in previous meetings, I've talked to Skip. He's gonna be talking with RV Technology to make sure that we're more consistent in what we're expecting each month, um, to keep that item line in check. Um, one other thing that I'd like to call your guys' attention to, let me find it here. You'll see on page, sorry, I should have sought a little bit more. Oh, yeah, right above RV Technology, the computer software support. You'll see that the majority of that budget is taken up in, um, you know, the first month of the fiscal year. That's because we pay our annual dues, um, July every single year. Um, so if you.
To Denver?
And, yeah, uh-huh. Um, so some of these item lines, if you really look through them, you'll see that they're fairly high. Um, I've been watching those. I've been tracking those, um, and making sure that they're high and it makes sense, or where they are, um, for the month or for the year makes sense. Um, and that's why I haven't highlighted that computer software support. Um, it is over what we expect to do, uh, month to month, but that's only because we are paying our annual dues for the first one year. So. Great. So moving on, um, first update, um, coming back to you guys with the line of credit, um, our five hundred thousand dollar loan that, uh, we have the opportunity to renew. Um, if we do renew, it's not going to be the same amount and it's not gonna be the same type of line of credit. Um, it'll be a tax anticipation note. Um, TAMS are issued for twelve month increments. There's no fees unless the funds are used. Um, and there are alternative lines of credits or opportunities to have loans, but, um, the TAM keeps us under seven um, the TAM keeps us under seven percent interest rate. Um, and I talked with Tina at Union Bank. Um, and we would be able to take out a line of credit for up to three thousand and nineteen, or three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Um, a little over that. Um, if we want, I can move forward with it. I can let Tina know to draw us up a proposal and I can bring it to you guys next time.
At the last meeting you asked, you said you wanted our guidance on, or decision on that. I, I kinda think you, you're the one that should be deciding whether or not we need that, but if it's just, if it doesn't cost anything, then it's just insurance, just in case something bad happens.
Which would be a right recommendation, because that it's nice to have something there just in case we do have another large flood or natural disaster or something happens. Um, so I would say that that would be my recommendation is to move forward with it.
Lily, am I correct that you were thinking that in all likelihood we probably won't need it?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yep, yep, as, um, unless something drastic happens, we most likely will not have to use this.
Okay.
It's gonna be close.
Hmm?
It will be close.
Really?
But presumably then maybe if it's gonna be close, if we had to use it, it would only be a small, small portion, yeah. And so, the interest that we would, yeah, would be small.
Yeah, I also understand correctly that another option, if we do find that we're in a financial bind, is that we can borrow against, um, the FEMA money, which would be at no interest rate?
Yes, so essentially the way that we would do that, um, we have all that money in the bank. We would use the money that's in the bank, but we would have to pay that money back to be, so we would
Okay.
still owe that, um, or still need to replace it once we use it.
Yeah.
Um, but like I said, it's already the money that's in our bank. Um, we just have to make sure that if somebody comes not getting the money, it's there.
So in that scenario, we're not paying interest. Right, so that's like a little bit better for us. Okay, I still think it's nice to have the other option just in case, but I wanted to make sure I understood.
So in that scenario, FEMA would come after us, their money is, can only be used for mitigation projects. So, the select board, if they allow that, it would be in jeopardy of facing a FEMA audit and failing on it.
Okay.
If you use any of that money for anything other than mitigation projects.
So we can't even borrow it? It's okay.
Like I said, like I just said.
Yeah.
It sounds like we can't even borrow it.
You can't even bother. If you choose to, you know, you're on your own.
Gotcha.
At least I, you know, warned you folks, you know, you can do whatever you want, but you run the risk of FEMA auditors coming, just in case they come. They might, but if they do and they see the books, because they'll see money being taken out to be utilized here and there. And then, brought back in. You cannot do that.
Well, thank you for that advice.
So, so it's called intra-fund borrowing, um, essentially. We wouldn't be taking, it wouldn't show that that money was being taken out of the FEMA account item line. It would show that our general fund or our highway fund was in a significant deficit. So in.
Get that, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so just to be clear, in NIMRIC, it would not show that we're taking FEMA money to be used elsewhere. We're just using the money that is conjoined in our bank.
So, so you're running out of money and we have a big pot of FEMA money there. Like eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, whatever it is. So if I understand correctly, you would be taking from that eight hundred and fifty-one K and somehow hiding the fact that you're transferring it to.
No.
Okay.
No.
I'm not an accountant, so I just wanna be sure that
No.
that eight hundred and fifty-one K always stays eight hundred and fifty-one K unless we draw down, which we will in the next couple of weeks for these two bridge projects. We can draw down from that.
Yes.
I just wanted.
Is that eight hundred and fifty-one K, um, is it in its own account or is it, so that's why it wouldn't? John, you want to?
So, from the auditing point of view, um, this is something we went over very carefully with Vermont League of Cities and Towns because of exactly the concern that, um, that Skip raises. And it is, according to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns specialists who deals with this, perfectly okay to do this. It can't be spent on something else. But there can be intra-fund borrowing of it. Um, as long as, especially like tax money is coming in, it's gonna be repaid. Um, so it's not shown as spent at all. The money is all still there, um, for, for the FEMA project and it's, it's according to Vermont League of Cities and Towns, perfectly okay to do. Problem is, if you didn't have a plan to punish it. And the reason I said next year, the fullest was, you won't have this FEMA pile of money that you could do an intra-fund borrowing. But in terms of right now, the town is, according to Vermont League of Cities and Towns, the conversation about that, completely clean on this.
So the, the total here of these funds, one million, three hundred and fifty thousand and seventy-eight dollars, we could borrow that, you know, five hundred thousand of that without touching the eight hundred dollars. I mean, math is just like that. So it's unlikely that we would ever get to that point.
Essentially, yes.
Yeah.
Especially with, you know, our tax bills going on in, um, the next week and, and us starting to get our tax funds in. Any additional questions on that, that note?
I'm just gonna say, I won't ask additional questions, I don't feel like I fully understand. But I'm gonna like, I'm gonna just let it go because we're not there yet.
Okay, yep, yep, yep. Um, and if you want, I can either spend some resources or we can discuss kind of the mechanics.
Okay.
If you want.
Okay.
I'm more than happy to do that.
Okay. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Um, okay, moving on, um.
I should go to that class.
Well, it takes a minute to, to get it clipped. Um, so moving on to the second item here, the premium health insurance discussion that we started at our last meeting. So from our records, it, I, I couldn't necessarily find a specific point in time we decided to do this. Um, it looks like we had at one point covered a hundred percent of their healthcare costs. Then we moved to about seventy percent of their healthcare costs. Um, like I said, I don't see, couldn't find where the decision was, where that was made. Um, but if we chose to only cover the additional costs required to fully ensure our employee, so based on the difference between covering two members of a household versus three members of a household, um, the added expense is about seventy-two fifty, um, seventy-two fifty-five per her paycheck. Um, for about one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six and thirty cents per year, in which we would pay a monthly fee to our employee of a hundred and fifty-seven point.
We pay a monthly fee?
That would be the premium health assistance.
The added expense is, oh, seventy-two fifty-five per paycheck or one fifty-seven?
Per month.
A month. So only the additional cost required to fully ensure the employee based on the difference between covering two versus three. It's not the difference between covering two versus three, it's the difference between covering one versus two.
Well, there's three.
There's three. Third family member, right?
Yep.
Three, what three?
The, the spouse. Three, three people in the family that are covered. And so, when speaking, um.
Oh, the particular case, in our particular case, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Is this any different than what we've been doing all along, except for the fact that their, their cost is going up on there?
This is about, um, God, I should have brought this math with me, but this is about fifty-five dollars less than what we've been doing per month. Um, so it's a decrease for the town. If we decided to do it, um, this way. You know, paying the difference instead of paying a percentage of the whole total.
I guess I need a little more clarity.
Yep.
Yeah, I know we talked about this last time.
Yep, that's totally fine.
I'm sure I'm being dense, but, um.
I feel the same way.
Okay.
Right now, we're paying two hundred and fourteen dollars, um, which is about seventy percent of the, um, total cost, um, to, um, the individual. So, going back through the records, it looks like we had gotten a pay stub that had a certain number on it and we decided that's what we were going to be paying for.
A pay stub from the spouses?
From the spouse. Mm-hmm. Of what's taken out of her, her check. Um, now moving to what Diana and you guys had suggested of paying the difference between, um, two family members versus three family members, so adding our employee onto that family plan. That's seventy-two fifty-five. I can't necessarily speak to the math or the decision behind what we were doing previously, but if we were going to do it the way that we had talked about last, uh, meeting, seventy-two fifty-five is what it costs the spouse per paycheck.
So that's a savings to us because it was two fourteen per paycheck?
Yep.
But it's gonna be a cost to the employee.
It obviously is a cost to the employee.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's gonna be more. I mean, he's gonna be getting less of a premium assistance.
Yeah, but if he didn't work for a town, they wouldn't be getting any premium assistance.
So, from the, in, you know, the insurance, um, supplier for this spouse's insurance.
Oh.
Um, that individual said that the difference between having her husband on her, um, insurance and not having her on the insurance is seventy-two fifty-five.
Thank you, that's what we needed to know.
Okay.
I'm glad you checked into that.
And we're, oh, sorry Lily, that I don't understand as quickly as I wish I did, but where's the monthly fee of one fifty-seven nineteen?
His, uh, spouse gets paid by monthly, twice, um, twice a month, so twenty-six paychecks in a year. Our boys get paid every week.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, the way that we've had it set up is that, um, we are paying this, um, help, this premium assistance at the beginning of each month.
Okay.
So, okay, so he was getting one fifty-seven nineteen?
He was getting two hundred and fourteen dollars a month, yeah.
Um.
Uh-huh.
Are they okay with this? Like, is it, are they okay with, uh, or I don't know, maybe you haven't spoken to them.
I haven't spoken directly since I wanted to get, um, you know, this select board's decision and I couldn't find where we had made the decision to start doing this. Um, so I also wanted to bounce that off of you guys, if you had known, um, where we had made this decision. Um, you know, I think my, what I would be recommending to you guys would be different if I could
Yeah, I don't know.
say, you know, where we've decided to do this, but.
It was probably a long time ago that it first started, um, but it was always my understanding that we're just paying the difference for the, what the employee's spouse would be paying premium, not the, anyway, I think this is the right way.
And in this case, it would be seventy-two fifty-five per paycheck is what?
Well, it's seventy-two fifty-five for the spouse per, per paycheck, so that's twenty-six paychecks in a year. And then we would divide that number by twelve because we're paying enough.
But that's what it would cost her to add that person?
Yep.
And so we're, yeah. So that seems to make sense. Although we're, I'm confused, you guys have a different opinion, but, um, finally got there.
Good.
And listen a minute, um, makes sense to me.
I'm still mentally working my way through it, I guess I'm a little slower than Chris, um.
Well, I think, and maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that Lily reached out to the, to this employee's, um, partner. That partner said it would cost them another seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents per their paycheck to add their rest of the family members to the insurance policy.
Yeah.
We're gonna pick that up.
Yeah, so the seventy percent contribution, that is just sort of, that's the standard thing that we do with employees that we are paying insurance for.
It's just one individual, um, that we're doing this for and, um, previously, that two fourteen, um, when I did the math and the calculations from the pay stub was about seventy percent of the, um, total cost to the spouse, so.
Okay.
And that's what we were doing previously.
For this specific employee.
For this specific employee.
Okay, I think I
Yeah.
get it now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're gonna hear about this.
You think we will?
Do you have?
No. No, I, I think we're doing it the right way, I think maybe we weren't doing it the right way before.
Um, okay.
So.
I mean, if it's gonna be sixty dollars less per month. Yeah, it might be a couple. We'll see.
But that's what that's for, right? The premium help, like this policy is meant to cover to get.
Yes.
The, the purpose of this policy is so that, um, we get that person on that health insurance plan and we're doing that plan.
Right, and we're not paying, we're not paying, so whatever monthly we'd be paying for a single person.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we have mentioned, we, we've mentioned this about a couple other things that have popped up. Um, and Lindsay, I like the way that you have cited in the past. This is one of those areas where we're kind of lacking clear set policy for it. Um, and so it's probably something that we, you know, if we're making a decision here today, it's probably something that should be added to our personnel policy, um, for our full-time employees as well, yeah.
So are all three of us in agreement that this is the way to move forward?
I think I am.
We can talk about it a little bit more?
I don't feel like I need to talk about it more, I just, um, I would be curious, like I don't know, I, I guess I like hate to make a decision that's a standing decision without having just kind of heard like another perspective from them, if it's gonna like um, impact, maybe there's an angle I'm not understanding, but I think, I mean, it does make sense to me, I think it makes sense.
Lily, do you mind? Can you, can you play devil's advocate, what, uh, why? Why this might not be a good idea?
I think the only thing there is that, you know, we've had a, we, we have been doing it a certain way. Um, and I'm sure our employees come accustomed to us doing it a certain way. So changing that, um, you know, depending on whether it was right or wrong, the way that we had done it beforehand, changing that is going to affect that employee. Um, keeping it consistent, um, I, I guess I'm trying to play devil's advocate here, but, um, keeping it consistent would just be doing the same thing that we've always done with this employee, just changing with, um, their, um, what's the word I'm looking for, their situation. Um, the other way that you can look at it is kind of like correcting a potential wrong. Um, or creating a new policy, policies change in organizations. But if, if you want, we can not make a firm decision on this and we can talk to this employee directly and um, you know, continue this discussion on if we, if we want to change it. I feel like, Lindsay, is that kind of what you're?
This came up because the, our employee presented, or the spouse had an increase in her insurance and thus an increase in her premium. And a premium for three people versus a premium for two people is what you checked into.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So if I understand correctly, so we were contributing, is it two hundred and fourteen dollars per pay period or per month?
Per month.
Okay. Um. And the seventy-two fifty-five is gonna be four times a month, that contribution?
No, the seventy-two fifty-five, um, is just how it affects, um, the spouse's paycheck.
Yep.
So, um, that affects it for twenty, you know, twenty-six paychecks in the year. We would take that total cost of seventy-two fifty-five by twenty-six and we would divide that by twelve and pay it, um, monthly.
And that's the one fifty-seven nineteen?
Yes. Or we could pay every two weeks seventy-two fifty-five.
Okay. Gosh.
Yeah, we can continue the.
I'm sorry, I, I don't wanna talk into that, I just, I feel confused enough about it that, um. I'm ready to make a decision.
We can talk about it later.
We should talk about it again.
Okay.
In, in the meantime, um, would you like me to reach out to this employee so he can potentially be a part of this conversation and let her know what we're thinking about doing?
I, well, I don't, I don't know, I kinda know how they would feel.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that, yeah.
I guess I was just, I was trying to figure out how it was gonna impact, like, his paycheck, like, what, you know, what I was trying to.
Like sixty dollars a month, which, you know, everybody's insurance is going up, but it's a fair way to do it.
Like, if their insurance is already going up and then we're gonna be contributing sixty dollars a month less than we were, so they're sort of getting a double whammy, which um, you know, it's not necessarily like our fault, but that can, that can hurt, you know, financially, so I don't know, I mean, talk about.
But it would hurt worse if it was mandatory that he took down her insurance.
Right.
Okay.
Right, that's, yeah, that's the other thing, is that we're getting a good deal.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if, another way of looking at it is if she happened to lose her job, now we're buying the full premium for that family.
Right.
The seventy dollars a month or whatever our paycheck, that's really cheap. For the town. I think, I think the town should definitely make that happen. Just my opinion. I mean, if you look at it, if you weigh it out.
With the big picture, yeah.
If the spouse loses her job and loses that insurance, now the town of Woodbury is paying for that whole insurance policy.
Yeah.
Cause that would just kind of continue what we're doing, the, the current system. And yet, so if.
So right now we're.
Which is fine, if that's what we wanna do, but that isn't necessarily the purpose of the premium health insurance. So, I mean, it, it can be a conversation for a different day, but.
I don't wanna drag it on you guys, I just don't, I don't know, I'm so confused.
It's totally, I think we can, we can move on.
Okay.
We can come back to this in a minute.
Okay.
If, if that's all right with you both.
Do it with me.
Okay.
Do it with me. Um, so, uh, third thing, the um invoices for both the bridges, TH-23 and TH-24 have, came in today. Um, so those will be paid and processed, and then the remainder of the funds and uh, we received from the evil plea all used for mitigation from their fourth law. Um, and then the fourth and the last thing, um, the financial director at uh VLCT is starting a monthly course for new treasurers that I'd like to be a part of. Um, it's the first Thursday of each month for about an hour and a half. Um, there will be small um projects that I'll be working on that should only take about thirty minutes to an hour a month to do and finish. And it'll run for one year. Um, so just wanna let you guys know, I'd love to do this. I don't, I believe I'd need your approval to do it for, or dedicate my time to it, um, but I think it's.
Well, it's gonna be in the morning, so we, you know.
Yeah.
Part of your time is.
I would too.
Already.
Any kind of continuing education and development that, in my opinion?
Perfect.
Only benefits the town?
Mm-hmm, perfect.
Especially if it's free.
And it is, it's great. Um, perfect, that's the, the last of my stuff until we start talking about tax rate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna plan to, to chat again and come back to this uh, premium health insurance discussion.
I'll try to understand the better, sorry.
No.
I don't know why I can't read, I'm thinking it's a.
It doesn't play, sure. It's not stuff we do every day. Thank you, Lily.
I think we can move on, and Michael.
Okay.
Thanks for being here.
Um, so the first thing on my list here is the USDA NRCS Emergency Leadership Protection Program, the grant agreement. It came to us kind of as a surprise last week, uh, because that money has been held up by the Trump administration and looks like they've finally passed it on. I started looking at it today and um, I think we shouldn't sign the agreement tonight. Um, I need to get some questions answered, um, and I can point out some of the things that I found in the uh, grant agreement that are kind of red flags for me. Um, and I could go over the numbers first if you want, or I could point out some of the red flags. Sort of connected, but not totally. Why don't I just do the numbers first? So the grant, um, the total cost that we would get from USDA um, is a hundred-and-fifteen thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and thirty-four cents.
Nine, nine fifty-five you said?
Uh, nine fifty-five.
Okay.
And that, it's a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent match for the actual construction. And that's pretty much what this um, amount of money covers, and I'll explain the difference. So the town's match would be thirty-seven thousand five-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. And we were, had been talking about, the only way we would really do this grant is if we could use some of that mitigation funding. And we did explore whether or not we could do that, um, and I do have an email from um, a person at uh, NRCS saying that there wouldn't be any conflict. However, in part four of the sponsor responsibilities, which the town is the sponsor, it says, ensure and certify by signing this agreement that its cost share obligation is from a non-federal source. So that kind of shoots that down right, right from the very beginning. The other, you know, another red flag for me is that they would pay a hundred percent of the engineering costs. And my original understanding was that they would also provide the engineer that would do the engineering for this. And in the grant agreement, it would be the sponsor, the town, that would be um, going out to bid and hiring their own engineer. And they're only allowing, the maximum amount that they will allow for the engineering design is three-thousand three-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. And I know just for the Valley Lake box culvert, I think we paid Nate C. Card a couple of years ago, four thousand something for that, so. And then there are any additional costs um, that the sponsor incurs above that three-thousand three-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars for um, management of the construction, um, anything over the engineering, that amount that they've designated, would also be a responsibility of the town. So there's like these hidden costs that we don't, wouldn't know about at the beginning, that we might find out that we're responsible for.
And I kind of thought that they told you at one point that all that would be paid for.
Yeah.
Right now.
Yeah, so, um, so here's one of the lines in the budget narrative. So NRCS pays up to seventy-five percent of eligible construction costs. And the sponsor pays twenty-five percent of eligible construction costs. So if there was anything um, above what is considered eligible, and that's kind of a vague term, um, that they would determine, again, the town would be responsible for that. Um, and then it says, NRCS will contribute up to three-thousand three-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars for contract administration and technical services. So, you know, this project would definitely require um, someone to be the overseer of the works. Um, and someone beyond my experience anyway. So, and which is what, you know, again, when I compare it to the value that culvert is that, you know, um, the engineer Nate C. Card would be providing that, and he wrote that into the estimate for the culvert. So those expenses are already accounted for. So um, I tried calling um, the fellow that I'd been, was talking with um, before, NRCS, and for some reason the phone line didn't work anymore. I don't know whether, why that is.
That's scary.
Yeah, and then I tried calling um, Brian Voight, the CBRPC person who was assisting with this. Um, and I left a message um, with him. I couldn't get, speak to him directly today, but he had offered to kind of help oversee some of the um, the accounting, et cetera, that we would need to do, which is uh, pretty similar to FEMA as far as its reporting. Uh, just the required, so um, right at the moment, I don't know if we, I wanna do this or not. Um, so I would like to hold off on this until I have some better answers. And this um, fact that we can't use a non-federal, uh, that our obligation, our cost share match obligation would have to come from a non-federal source.
So is there, the person that told you it would be okay, do they have some good reason beyond what's on the form?
Well, it could be that it might have been okay, you know. And now there are new rules. That's kind of what, what I'm sensing from.
Well, but not using federal money, unless federal money has come up before in other.
It has, and that's why I asked that question of the person from NRCS.
Yeah.
And he said that it would.
Sounded too good to be true.
Yeah.
The other thing is this stuff, hundred-and-fifteen thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-five, I mean, that's already more than a year old, right?
No, that's, that's, that's as of right now.
Oh, okay, so they did update that.
They didn't have a figure before.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that, okay.
Okay, so that's a new, new amount.
Now, is this the bank right behind Rathburgs?
Yeah.
Well, not right behind, um, it's more up the road a bit.
But between him and Jarnes?
Yes.
It's a regular rock dumped over currently to try to stabilize it, is that correct?
There, there has been some stabilization efforts there in the past, um, that are pretty much deposited in the brook out here below the Cattero box culvert.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, what they would be expecting for an objective for the Cattero is um, stream bank protection, um, and it says armor, two seventy-five foot sections of stream bank with ten-foot high by five-foot thick riprap with a pinned concrete fill. So, there is another smaller, this is actually, this grant is for two sites, and you know, we're so totally focused on the Cattero, but the other site that they approved is over by Chris Byers. The brook that comes down from the ridge line of her house and down that class four road, um, right beside the class four road, uh, has deposited a lot of debris and, and trenched out her property um, behind her house. And then right in front of this big culvert that goes underneath the county road, is a, a huge mound of kind of like slate gravel that with the, the next heavy rain event would probably push right into the culvert and flood it up. So they're thinking of this as an emergency protection thing to get that a hundred-foot channel of erosion that's in the, in the, partly created by the flooding, but also was, was the brook channel, to get that out of there so that the culvert wouldn't be compromised with a future flood.
Could that possibly be a mitigation project on its own?
It could. I think, I don't think, you know, Alfie could give a good sense of what it might cost the town road crew to do that. Plus, the town road crew is really stretched right now to try to get everything else in front of this um, problem. But that could be something that could wait another year and just hope that it don't get a flood until then.
Well, I mean, to see if, that there's, I don't know how much.
It would be a simple project for the road crew to do.
Yeah, it would be fairly quick.
Yeah, let's get that one, be, and okay, he's.
That's not fine.
Think you have enough two-thousand dollars extra to do that?
Well, we'll have to sit down with Lily and make sure we do it. Michael, if you could forward the information regarding the fact that you cannot use any money for that contract, I'd like to re-read that.
Okay.
Because I'm sure last year we were able to do this. I would have said anything to that effect, so.
Yeah.
I believe things have changed.
I remember it told Greenlight.
Yeah, it was ready to go.
From NRCS.
Yeah, so I think things have changed a little bit.
They have.
So maybe you'll have enough money left over in the eight-hundred or five-hundred thousand to do the whole project, you know?
FEMA's federal money.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we'd be using that FEMA federal money for a mitigation project.
In the list priorities, where you guys see that Cattero bank stabilization project?
We didn't even discuss it earlier. Yeah, that wasn't one of our mitigation projects.
But I mean, I guess, cause we were planning on it being a grant fund with the USDA. But where, now in hindsight, where would you put that in that, or wouldn't you put it in that list priorities?
Well, I think the purpose of it is to prevent flooding the village.
Yeah.
To sort of slow that water down.
Right, and to keep the Cattero intact.
And then keep the investment that we got on the Cattero, which is that flat dock, to keep that intact.
Cause we did do an emergency project, this was quite an idea trans. A little five years ago, maybe a little bit more, um, where the bank, um, Hoover Buck Lake Broke washed out and a big chunk of one of the lanes, including the pavement, washed out also. The guardrail was suspended in the air, so. And so we, that, in my memory, that bank has been repaired twice before the twenty-twenty-three flood. And each time there wasn't flooding, it had a damage to, you know.
Right, and, and learning tonight that we have to supply our own engineer, we can't get an engineer to, to design an eight-foot pipe under the road. That's gonna be a whole lot more work for an engineer to do, so I think that, this is probably not gonna happen this year.
Now, with those two new bridges on the Cattero, how much faster is that water gonna come through there?
No faster, I don't think.
You don't think so?
Like a he's.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Well, I think they've got stones in the, in the bottom of the culverts. Like, it's just like the regular riverbed.
Okay.
So there's stones in there. It's gonna, it's not like it's gonna get into that culvert and shoot. There's stones in there, it's gonna kind of slow it.
Okay.
I mean, that's the idea, as well as allow fish to pass.
So when one of my site visits there, I talked to the engineer on site or the project manager on site, and I said, for that big round, galvanized aluminum culvert, I said, how are you gonna hold that in the stream bed without it washing away? So when we put stones in the water, and the stones at the bottom will hold it in place and also provide habitat for fish. So it's, to hold it in place is not to impede the water going through it. And some fish can live in there.
But I think also, correct me if I'm wrong, I'll, the, the larger volume of water that is able to pass, it was gonna move more slowly through there, I suppose if you constrict that, right? On the opposite end, you're gonna have a higher velocity.
Right.
That comes out of the other side of that, so.
Wait, the huge advantage here is that you have less chance of debris catching up and building water back. And then it comes up above the culvert.
Yeah.
And before you know it, the whole culvert picks up and goes away. That's what happened uh, with Jarnes's.
The water's gonna come down.
Yeah, it got plugged up, it got, the water built up and it just kind of picked the culvert right up and downstream.
Everything's properly sized all the way down to here, and we got new culvert over here, and maybe we'll just keep going until it gets to the swamp.
Yeah.
Did that culvert ever just?
The flood plain here. It was plugging, doing some water to spit out.
Did that culvert, that big culvert still in the brook up there?
No.
No, it got taken out?
That's sitting on the, in the area of the town road. Or, it's, it's usable, we can use it again in another, in another spot if we can.
That's pretty big, wow, how big is it?
Six foot.
Oh.
So it's not quite big enough to do the two projects on the county road, if I can get this iron out, so.
I'm gonna encourage us to move on to the other parts of Michael's presentation, just because we're about forty minutes ahead of schedule.
Yeah, it needs to be physical real fast. So um, we did the update on the outdoor classroom. So the replacement of the dentary, it's been cut down. Carolyn Stewart called me this morning, she saw this on the agenda, and um, the, the plan is, with Slupport approval, is to replace. the, the plan is, with Select Board approval, is to replace the other tree, there are mountain ash trees and between the rose solid and everything else, it's just hard for them to grow there. Michael Sadler, who has a degree in landscape architecture, I asked him about those trees a while ago, and he recommended Lyndon trees to replace those. So, and Carolyn was thinking that maybe, and the, we have a local tree nursery that would show up for a six-foot branched Lyndon sapling, they're $45 apiece. So the plan is to probably replace them in the spring. Sometimes you plant trees in the fall, but judging on what'll happen to those trees over the winter, depending on the weather, it might be better to give them what chance of.
$45?
That's it?
That seems pretty cheap, I mean, we paid like $500 for those maple trees that we.
Well, they're a bit bigger, these are six-foot saplings.
When those trees were put in down there, Peter Pelts did all kinds of research, and he said those were the best type of trees to be put in there.
Right.
Because of the soil and all of that.
Yeah, and I helped Peter plant the trees, but according to another person, Michael Sadler, the Lyndon trees would be a good replacement for them. Yeah, in front of the Montpelier City Hall, there's some beautiful, well-grown Lyndon trees that have similar kind of restraints on them with sidewalk and pavement, et cetera. And so we can research more and, you know, maybe Michael will be able to to look into that a little bit more for us, but. So the plan is to replace those trees in the fall, and Carolyn was thinking that she might add the price of the trees to whatever budget they get for the plants and stuff. And then I'll often put the trees in, in the spring. So that's that one. So the joint meeting with the planning commission, or I should say with the remnants of the planning commission and the CVRPC and the Select Board has been scheduled for October 13th, which is the first Monday, first, the second Monday, but the first meeting of the Select Board in October.
October 13th?
And Brian said that he could be here in person, so.
So it would be done during the Select Board meeting?
Mm-hmm.
That was, yeah, okay. Okay.
Thanks, Michael.
So I'll do some more asking about this grant and but I anticipate that, that we won't.
Not this year.
Except that, yeah. We, we might do the work on our own, but that depends on the FEMA piggyback.
I guess I just had a, I had a thought, a thought, a thought in my head, which might or may not make any sense, but I was just thinking about the town match for that grant and coming up with the money. And I know, so Ronnie Rathburn had pointed that spot out to me at one point after the flood, and he had mentioned concern about the bank eroding enough that it impacted the road, especially with the quarry truck traffic on that road. And I was just sort of having the thought that, like, if we're gonna be negotiating with the quarry about getting more money based on what they're hauling out of there, that would be a project that they would probably have significant interest in. So maybe it would be something, maybe it'd be something that we could kick around with them, you know, trying to come up with that match.
Yeah, they might be willing to supply the stones.
I would say for money, but. Either, either. Show us the two, yeah, it's all the same.
Probably paying a lot of money for it, not.
Yeah. And then another, just a quick, this isn't on the agenda, but I did send an email to Nate Seacar to try to get a sense of the, the increase in cost for the Valer Lake culvert. You know, we'll probably need to, we could use the leftover FEMA money for that, or we would need to budget it in our fiscal year '27 budget, that would be a significant chunk of the budget in order to get that project implemented.
What do we, do we have a rough estimate on that project cost of it?
Yes, well, D-Trans, we've got a grant for it already, we've been awarded a grant. The upper limit is $200,000 that they'll cover.
Yeah.
The estimate from Nate from a couple of years ago is $275,000. So I'm assuming that probably that estimate would be higher now. And I was trying to find out how much, and so at some point we'll need to figure out how are we gonna, because the, the plan is to put the RFP out this fall, have a contractor pick, you know, mid-winter, and then have, have things set to go in the, in the summer of next year, 2027, or 2026. Probably, I mean, we could have this stipulation that it start after July 1st, which would then put it in fiscal year '27. So just, just a thought, that's another one that we're gonna have to come up with, a chunk of money for. The others are.
Which has been in the works for.
Which is.
Man, early.
Thanks.
Well, that's it.
I guess let's move on to the recovery officer's report. Update on the roof RFP, moving the RFPs for the basement waterproofing and window replacements.
Okay, you need to receive my report. So I'd like to start with disaster 4810 DR, which is 2024. So, I mean, that's just about complete. To Michael's point here, things have changed. I've sent several emails to the new FEMA contact that have not returned. There are phone calls that I've made to the individual that have not returned, too. So my next step is to escalate, and I'll escalate to the state of the law recovery officer, just to find out what's going on. So what we're waiting for is, it indicates on my report, is $13,466 and plus category Z money for that. Not a lot of money, but I just want to get that project done in a hundred. Next item is for disaster 4720, which is the 2023 disaster. We have some witnesses, which Lily alluded to earlier, that we received both invoices who are to work on Tom Hallow's '23 and '24. And with that, I sent an email to Lily asking that once she pays these invoices, whether it be by check or by electronic transfer, that I get some sort of indication that that occurred, so I can upload those documents into the grants portal and close out 4720. So that would be done, but closing out, you know, just doesn't happen overnight, as I'm finding out with the 2024 flood. So with that, the same documents that I assigned for the the 2024 disaster will be sent to me, you know, they are small permanent work, project certification and acknowledgement, a financial report, and a project completion and certification report. So once those three documents are signed, you know, that basically ends disaster 4720. And, you know, we already have the money for it, which is very good, what we don't have is the state's share of it. So I'm curious as to why we don't have the state's share for 4810, and I'll talk to them about 4720, too. Maybe they're having a crisis, funding crisis or something there. So that's it for the two disasters, you know, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak, which is, for me, it's very good news, for Danielle, it's very good news as well. So moving on to Woodbury mitigation projects, I understand from Lizzie that two contractors showed up and.
Cool. Yep.
And you said they were very professional?
Yep, it was Snow Country Roofing and Vermont Construction Roofing Division. I was really impressed with both of them, I have no idea what their bids are gonna be, we, I didn't ask, I figured they need to crunch numbers, but they, both, they're representatives, seem really knowledgeable, real professional, clean-cut, you know, just good, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for being here.
Yeah.
And making that happen, it was great. So just to refresh everyone, I'm sure you've seen this gap shot. The bids are due to the town clerk, to Robin, on September 4th. And the bid opening will be the September 8th Select Board meeting. So we could put that as an action item or on the agenda for the September 8th meeting, will be bid opening, if there are bids. And then subsequently, we'll have to identify, excuse me, sign a contract with the selected vendor and then move forward with the project. And hopefully they can follow this timeline, if not, the Select Board would then have to negotiate some timeline. But that's always negotiable. So moving forward with that, that's exciting, because I remember you folks saying that you definitely had bidders for the town hall initially, so I think the, excuse me, the town hall it was, yeah. So I think the enticement was the second project, you know, because, you know. Yeah, yeah, more money. So moving on, based on waterproofing RFP, I gave you guys that two weeks ago, and hopefully you were able to look through it and make edits and comments, because I got to get that off my desk this week. And as the timeline indicates, Select Board approves the RFP today. I'm hoping that you folks are able to do that today. And if you have any edits, just let me know, I can, you know, get those down, you know, tomorrow and resend the RFP. But if, absent any edits, I can, you know, clean this up, remove the draft, and have it ready to go, have the advertisement written, and send it to John for posting on our website, and we will be stopped.
Did the roof, uh, did the roof RFP get advertised in the newspaper?
It sure did. Wonderful advertisement.
It was?
You can't, other than the general description of work, the rest of this just looks like.
Well, a lot of it's boilerplate from the other RFPs, it didn't really create, you know, boilerplate, so it's the same boilerplate, but it's just the scope of work and materials are different. And you find out in the window wall of replacement as well. Boilerplate is the same material and scope of work that we found.
But I think that the edits that we made on that in the first one, the boilerplate pieces were valuable. And I had no edits for this one.
Well, this is the, this is more like a fact-finding mission.
Because they're gonna each provide different solutions, right?
Hopefully they do. And that's, the scope of work is pretty open-ended, because we don't know exactly how they're going to go about, you know, basement waterproofing, there are several ways to do it, perhaps the floor might even get painted, who knows?
No wonder it seems so, so complicated, I think.
So anyhow, if, if you give me the authorization, I could have this off my desk tomorrow and ready to go.
I was good with it, I read it, and I thought it looked good.
I'm ready to say yes?
I, just so you know, I'm talking about the basement one, the window one, I'm sorry, we don't have that right yet, is that correct?
No, because, I'll tell you why.
That's okay, I just wanted to be sure I wasn't missing something I was supposed to have read, okay.
The window one, well, we'll always step back to the basement waterproofing. I hear it's okay from two members, Diana?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, oh, yeah. Like I said, there wasn't much to look at, except the building description and a lot of boilerplate.
You can get it off your desk.
Yeah.
So I dropped off also to you folks the scope of work for the window replacement. And this is a little more interesting, because, you know, window replacement, size, basement replacement, and replacement, it's out of our scope, but I'm learning about it. So based on FEMA requirements for window replacements, if you look at, if you go on attachment B, there's a minimum specification requirement for town office windows. And that's based on the FEMA publication, protection of opening shutters and glazes, which indicates that the glazing should be laminated and laminated as it's explained in that picture I put into the document. So I won't go into all the, well, maybe I should, okay. During impact testing, laminated glass in the system can fracture, but the interlayer must remain intact to prevent water and wind from entering the building. These systems may also increase energy efficiency of the building over standard glazing. So with that, this is what, I'm working with a gentleman who's been in the commercial glass business for 35 years, commercial and residential. And so he sent me, he's been doing some research as well. And he sent me this depiction of what the glass should look like. And this will fit the requirements of, of FEMA's glazing for these windows. So what the Select Board should choose, or the town clerk as well, to that matter, you know, the exterior trim, should it be wood, should it be vinyl, should it be fiber cement, should it be aluminum?
Will it look the same in any case?
Should, I'm sorry?
Will it look the same in any case, it's gonna be white, or?
Oh, that's what you gotta tell them. That's what you have to tell them, do you want it white? It, it comes in different colors. I could send a color palette.
I mean, it's white now, right?
It is.
So it's gonna be white, but what's the difference?
I would say white vinyl would be my choice, I think it'll be less expensive than wood and why, then we could save the funds for other projects, right? I mean, that's probably the lowest cost rate or.
What is the fiber cement?
Would windows in anymore? I don't, folks don't, there aren't many all-wood windows going in anymore, you know, like exterior wood, just doesn't.
Yeah.
They just don't last much, like, so I think unless anybody has started, any of B, C, or D, I don't know, I've seen the fiber cement.
I would do C, I would not do it.
Never seen one of those, but B or D.
So vinyl would be less costly, I presume then?
I don't, between vinyl and aluminum, I don't know, I don't know, I don't think I've ever done aluminum.
I'd run it, and both, I think, would last a long time.
Just say vinyl.
Okay, vinyl.
Yeah, keep it white?
Yeah, right now. Windows, you have a bare prime interior?
I would say that it's definitely cost-effective if they can have them primed or even painted white, it just.
White, painted white, just let me know what you want.
I would say if you have it painted white, because it's expensive to pick and.
Is the, is the trim white now, or is it that, is that tan?
Is it a tan or a grayish color?
I think it's the tan, I think it should be the same color as the trim.
Oh, we just get it primed?
In the whole.
Perfect.
Just get it primed?
Yeah.
We're never gonna get a match to, to a certain color.
I'll find it.
Latex primer?
I don't think that, oh, you have to say primed, I'm not sure that there's.
They'll decide.
Yeah.
They'll decide that, but most likely latex.
Yeah, okay. You don't want them stained or anything.
Mahogany.
So one of the questions this gentleman and I worked around, he said, he asked if anyone had pictures, old pictures of the town offices. Because right now the double-hung windows are just panes of glass. And he's wondering if those windows that were. And he's wondering if those windows that were replaced actually had grills on them, wooden grills. So, if anyone has old pictures of the town offices indicating what the replacement, what the windows were before they were replaced. I'm presuming they were wooden grill windows.
Oh, I wonder...
I'm afraid of vinyl on it, in the mold.
What about that poster above the, uh, the copier that, uh, with all the old schoolhouses? That was one of the old schoolhouses.
I don't remember signing with that building.
Yeah.
But Robin and I can sit down and take a look at that.
When was that building built?
I don't know if we ever figured that out. But I, I have a question. Why only four double-hung windows? Why would you neglect, uh, neglect the fifth one, which is over the stairwell to the basement? I mean, we don't want that to blow out in a hurricane, right?
Okay, so there's five. I thought there was four.
Good catch.
Similar question. I see seven fixed basement windows. Is that counting the ones? I felt like there were fewer than seven, unless you're counting the ones that are kind of in that unused space that we were talking about not replacing? Okay, what, were we... I thought we said we were gonna not replace those with windows, because we were worried about, um, during the waterproofing phase, maybe we'd be changing the grade and maybe we wouldn't really wanna have, right? Did we?
Yeah, they're already locked off.
Okay, so there would be, one, two, three, I, I took pictures, so I'll take a look at those that are exposed and change this.
Okay.
There's one in the stairwell, one under the porch, and then the three that are, I think there were three? In the main room that don't...
Yeah, I'll double-check. I, I took photos and sent it, uh, to this guy I'm working. So, I'll check on all the windows.
And then Skip, I would say that, um, the contractor will install new, uh, painted exterior trim.
Yeah.
Or, as you specified.
Now, the awning windows, there's one, over, two. I don't know, I don't know where you get five awning windows.
Let me see, phone my phone.
But we're gonna come back to this anyways, right?
Right.
At the next meeting?
Yeah.
So, we could maybe move on, and we're gonna have another, another chance, chance to...
Yeah, at the working meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, this will be ready for your review at the working meeting. So, I'll make sure that it's, uh...
And we'll get it going.
That's right, we can count it.
Perfect.
So, another thing to consider is road repair. If there's any, and it's, it's not in here, but it'll be in the next drop, road repair. Should the contractor be fixing road repair when he finds water on the, the opening? Do you want him to install, this is some notes I took, a drip cap flashing over the top of the windows?
Over the trim, yeah.
The trim, yeah. Install drip cap flashing over the window units. Add exterior trim around five window units with the finish white, I'm presuming, because it's all white. Cocking and sealing, and we'll have him do that. And interior trim will be primed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll, uh, take those notes and, uh, look at my pictures. So, anyhow, it's getting there. It'll be...
Thank you.
It'll be done.
Yeah, this is, uh, I haven't left. Appreciate you doing it.
Don't worry about us. All right, so, I think that's all I have, except, uh, if you don't mind, I, I know it's not public comment, and I'd just like to make an editorial for tonight. So, here's my editorial for tonight. You know, inaction on personnel issues by the board, you know, may have a detrimental effect to these people's lives. Okay, so, I encourage the select board, you know, to prioritize personnel items and take action on them as they come up. Because I used to, you know, I used to be boss for about seventy people. And I prioritize, all personnel issues comes before any money issues or anything like that. If your employees aren't happy, if they feel like they're being underappreciated, they're not gonna do a good job. So, I encourage the select board to take these items seriously, prioritize them, and take action on them. That's it.
That's a really good point. Thank you.
Feedback.
Thanks. That's all I have.
All right, come on to the roof commissioners' report.
Okay, um...
Oh, I have one more thing. Sorry. So, as I was going around the outside of the building taking pictures, I noticed the building is in disrepair. And it needs painting, scraping, priming, it needs the whole thing. So, the way I look at it, we're having a new roof put on, we're having new windows put on. And to put it on a building that looks like that would just be not aesthetically pleasing, you know, if you know what I mean. It is, you know, the backside of that building is, looks like it's ready to fall off, you know. Some of it flaking, I think some of the clavels have split, so...
And there's a bunch of, uh, big quality, uh, you know, some kind of raggedy-like tree that needs to be pulled off.
Yeah, so, I don't know if, I presume the budget is complete, so...
We have a separate budget for town office repairs, if we need to for next year.
There's a building fund too. I'm not sure how much money is in it.
That's what I, that's what I'm talking about.
So, I encourage the select board to take a look at the building.
What year, can you, do you recall what that building fund was? We went to the last...
Yeah, um, the town building maintenance fund has, uh, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars in it. And then our...
In it, I'll do a check out.
We also have a item line that we budget for each year, um, that has seven thousand dollars in it for sure.
Thanks, Lynn. Thanks for that, Lynn.
Well, just jumped right on at the, you know, the new windows, the new roof, and, you know, the white on.
Thanks, Skip.
You're welcome.
Have some cookies.
After that.
I think so.
They look like muffins or something.
Cobbler.
Maybe that is a little bit, a little bit cobbler.
All right, yeah, I'll say yes. Thank you.
Thank you to Carol. It's really sweet of her.
Also, thanks. Good luck. Thank you.
Wow.
Is it fluffy cake?
I don't know, but it's really good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good. Very good.
What do you think, Michael?
I'd like to have it.
Say yes.
Michael's our food taster.
All right.
So, Al, we had, um, I think before you got here, we started to have a discussion about the school parking lot.
Yeah.
And the school parking lot is our responsibility to town, not the schools.
Yeah, I got that clarification from Robin.
Okay.
And it's on my schedule.
Thank you.
Maybe this week.
So, how much is that gonna cost?
As much as you want. I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a few hours with the grader. And I'm figuring probably ten loads on material. I mean, if you, if you're gonna do it, you gotta do it right. With that, with that product, if you don't put it thick enough, it's done, it won't hold on.
It's gotta be done.
I think it's been a long time since it's really had a base lift.
And it's...
And it's also very important to get that, keep that water moving. Because right now, it's just kind of setting in little hovel, or large hovels.
Pond.
And so, in during this process, that will be taken care of as well. So, you might be five to seven thousand dollars, right? From the head price, I mean, I just, with the truck and the machine time.
I mean, it's a good number just to have in our heads, so that we know, just having no experience at all.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
But if you're gonna, if we're gonna do it, we need to do it now, right?
We have to do it very soon, yeah. School starts the...
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth, but teachers will be coming sooner, so they're gonna be parking here. You know, you just can't do the job when the cars are in the way. I talked to, is it Tony?
Tony, oh.
Tony, the janitor?
Tom, the turkey dog.
Perfect, right.
Yeah.
And so, he told me that he would try to facilitate moving vehicles if need be. Uh, but I'm hoping we won't have to do that. Hopefully, we'll do it before they start coming in. And, um, which means maybe Thursday, or maybe first Friday next week. Uh, Monday, the Friday is a holiday, so...
Friday's a holiday?
Yeah, battle duty day.
Really?
So... So, Fri- Friday, we don't normally work, so we sort of decided, because I've got this week totally planned with projects, which we'll get to, but we're gonna take Monday off in place of Friday.
Instead of Friday?
Yeah.
So, um, we are, we started another grant project today. Me and Michael had a meeting with the grant issuers and project engineers. And, 'cause they wanted to do a pre-construction site visit.
Which one? Which one is that?
That's Wilbur Road.
Oh, Wilbur Road, okay.
So, we have started that. I may sort of have to back off on that, because the school parking lot is more time-sensitive. I wanna get that done. So, it's just that, between those two projects, that's where I'm, that's what I'm about to run. We've got a bunch of sand hauling, we've got, I don't know, many yard jobs, and last week, we put a bunch of days into it. Just to try to keep up with it. I mean, you gotta, we gotta, you know, move our, move our energy around to keep everything flowing, sort of.
And we, we agreed to have you do the three days a week for two months, right? Is that what you remember?
Well, I think that's a, that's another conversation.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. Getting, getting things done.
I, I do wanna mention that Wilbur, after I was kind of wondering why all these folks were showing up to, um, to look at this work, and it's kind of my impression this morning that, um, this really has become kind of a mitigation project for the flooding and erosion that happened in, in town in Wilbur Lake. Because they're, you know, wanting us to go have property, and we had different property owners there to get permission to go out of the road that way, so, um, and I'm just very much aware that one of them is a representative to, in our legislature, who had obviously been talking to one of the Vtrans people before this. So, I think we're basically doing a mitigation project there for the flooding, um, to try to prevent any future flooding and erosion on the hillside, damage to the camps on Wilbur Lake, and actual, uh, erosion gravel running into Wilbur Lake. So, it's more than a bit of roads project, I think, but, but they're willing to help fund that, so...
The Vtrans is?
Yeah. Um, it's, it's much more than what I anticipated.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's the other thing that's sort of, thank you for bringing that up, Mike. It's more work than what I anticipated. There's usually a grant, you're changing culvert, you're cleaning ditches and adding stone, sort of simple stuff. But they want substantial stone at the outlets of these culverts that we're putting in, like, two-foot-sized stones. So, that's a bit more work. I'm gonna look into where the best place for that. I, I have been offered to get it from the quarry, but we have to have a machine there to load it. They don't have a machine to load, so we have to figure out a way to get a machine to do that. So, things that I'm trying to work out, trying to figure out, but that's gonna be part of that.
So, Vtrans might give more money than...
No.
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 They might. They, they, they want it engineered correctly, but they have a limited amount of money. Like, they're, that's a twenty, twenty thousand.
Yeah, twenty thousand.
So...
It's basically become a project that's gonna use up two grants.
Grants.
Yeah.
Two grants.
A grant, a grant and a, um, project also. So, that's where the more money comes from, adding another grant award to it, and addressing that particular goal.
So, will those two grants totally cover it, or would we need to consider, like, any overage maybe being paid for with FEMA if it's a mitigation project?
It's gonna be hard to say.
Okay.
I mean, I just learned today that we have to do the big, the big stone, which is something that I was not... So, we gotta, I'll have to keep track of all the costs, all the yards of material, the machine time, and see where we end up.
Okay.
And then, maybe if the, if, if the grant doesn't cover the amount of work, then maybe we need to look into something with that, or take it out of our budget, our regular budget, whatever it may be. But I won't know until I, until I start seeing deliveries. Oh, rail trap. So, the new finding on rail trap. When I presented this last meeting, um, we were under the impression that Swenson Granite was going to give us gravel. Comes to find out, I, I talked to the representative for Swenson, and he doesn't have gravel. He was referring to the big stones that he's openly giving to us. However, that won't work for this project. So, I didn't dare to go forward with it, because that's another expense to the town, and it wasn't approved here at the, at the, um, the select board level. So, I would love to talk about that as far as, do we wanna, I mean, this is gonna be a mitigation project, so that can be, that can pay for the gravel, and I have access to the gravel. I just wanted to make sure that that, adding that cost of the gravel is okay to, to move forward with.
Do you have a sense of how much it will cost?
Uh, I'm figuring eleven loads. So, it's just the material roughly is thirty-three hundred bucks. And then the, and then the time, machine time.
So, you're still talking like, uh, between five and ten, or closer to five?
Probably ten, when you figure...
Really?
Well, if we're, it's already a mitigation project, so we have to keep track of all the time, machine time, all those expenses. So, all in, I think, yeah, you're probably looking at close to ten, maybe a little bit more.
Look at him.
He's already given you the...
Oh, he's already said, okay?
Yeah.
It's okay to do these projects.
What?
It's okay to do these mitigation projects.
Oh, okay.
Lily and I are gonna have to sit down as we start funding into this chunk of money.
Right.
You know, it, it may go away quickly, more quickly than we expect.
But we're getting something from it at each turn, so...
There was some intention.
We might, we might, and, and I think it's probably important that we prioritize what's, what's important. Rail trail is something that we're obligated to take care of, at to some degree or some level, so...
And they did, they did incur flood damage both years, right? So, it's already been a project that's on the books.
Yeah, I understand, rail trail.
Yeah, and so, one more detail that I, I don't wanna leave out is that, um, we have fifteen hundred dollars going towards this, this expense.
In what?
From CAT, C-A-T-T. They, they are chipping in.
Oh, nice.
Um, through Peter...
Halverson?
Halverson's, um, efforts.
Oh, that Cal- Caledonia Trail, yeah, okay.
Yes, so they're throwing in fifteen hundred dollars towards this. So, Lily will have to, uh, sort of, track that and figure out how to get the money out of theirs and ours and all that.
So, is the select board in agreement that should move ahead?
Yeah.
I would say yes.
Yes.
It's gonna be a minute. It's gonna, I mean, now, 'cause I just started this grant, and the park, it's probably gonna be a couple, three weeks before I can get to that.
Pictures.
Yeah, I've got pictures. You can have this now, as long as you're approving it. That's, uh, flat logs and, uh, that he needs. I do have pictures and I can get those sent to you before I, that's fine. Oh, uh, one more thing. The prices of equipment has gone up greatly since we set the price for the trailer purchase. And I know we set that for ten thousand. They're more like thirteen, fourteen thousand now. So I didn't wanna go purchase that without approval of the extra spend.
Yeah, we need it, right?
Well, we definitely need it, yeah.
Right now, we have no way of moving heavy equipment.
We do, but it's not, it's not legal, not safe, it's not a good idea. And we don't wanna say that too loud.
And what are we gonna do with the old one?
I, we can use it for a temporary bridge or we can maybe sell it, I don't know.
And, and I know that we've already been through this, but just remind me, like, the cost of repair, just getting new brakes put on and new lights and doing all that work, it's not worth it.
I don't, I don't believe this. I mean, this trailer is-
It's cooked.
It's cooked. It might be fine for a contractor, somebody that's moving lighter equipment and just not using it every day. But it's not okay for us. It's just, I'm just, we've been on borrowed time for a long time.
Okay, that's good to know.
So where would you buy this?
Well, there's a couple of different places. There's one place in Danville that I've gotten the price from. Uh, there's another place in Irisburg where I bought one in my personal world from, and I've been very happy with that. So I'm gonna go look into that. I just wanted to have an answer of, of the approval of the extra money.
Does, does the, does the trailer have any value in itself? And I don't know the answer, it's, but have, did the town ever sell used equipment? Those are two separate questions.
They, yeah, they've sold their old, the old one-time truck they sold for, you know, not much money, but.
Yeah.
It's usually, quite honestly, when we get rid of stuff, it's not much left.
So is, does this trailer have any value to offset the three or four thousand extra?
You might get a couple of thousand dollars for it, maybe, which is something.
Yeah.
Not nothing. Almost offsets the, the extra.
It's right up to the point, yeah.
You know, going up, so.
Will they take it as a trade-in?
It's probably gonna be down near parking lot for the, for sale. Um, so, okay, I'll move on, move forward with that and I will beat them down as much as I can. The one company in Irisburg may have a municipal discount program. You might be able to get, you know, some money knocked off of it, so I'll look into that.
I guess do whatever you can, take your-
Yeah, yeah. The other thing is the truck that we're supposed to be buying.
Yeah.
I'm up against the wall with that. I can buy a truck, but it's an automatic. And our operator that's gonna be driving that truck doesn't want an automatic. So I can get a standard, but it's probably a year away before we see it.
So it's a matter of personal preference, or is there like a solid reason to want sick?
I, I'm a fan of standard also. I particularly like automatic, but I'm old school. I think that's part of the reasoning.
Is it but more manageable? I mean, you have more options and?
Uh, I think it's more to do the whole thing, the emissions, the, the way everything works in it. So, and I think the federal government is pushing dealers to go with automatic. Uh, some of it is that not everybody can drive a standard officially. So an automatic, you just push the brake, you push the gas, just like in a regular car. It's, it's that simple.
Getting the whole crew over there to drive standard?
Yes.
Currently, but that might not always be the case, right?
Currently, yes.
I mean, in case.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm considering.
That's, that's what's so challenging is that why, why can't we find a standard transmission?
Because everybody wants one, maybe. Maybe it's just more popular.
How much more expensive is the truck with a standard transmission versus an automatic?
It's actually less. It's like ten thousand dollars more to buy an automatic than it is a standard. So again, another reason why I'm in favor of the standard, but I can't locate one, I can't, I can't find one.
And can we live long for another year? If you were to order, two questions again.
Yeah.
If we, if you were to place an order today, is that price on a year from now when it's delivered? And then, or is it your, your?
Well, yes, we could buy the truck today.
Standard.
Yeah, order it, that price would hold until it was built and delivered. But then it's, the biggest problem is getting the equipment put onto it, getting on their schedule to get, you know.
Well, is this the place in New Hampshire that you were dealing with?
Yes, yes.
So they do all that? It's not like you have to bring it somewhere else?
When we ordered, when we talked about this truck and you guys approved it, they were telling me, yep, we've got a hundred trucks on the lot, there'll be no problem, just pick one out. Well, they left out the detail that they didn't have any standards. So I'm a little frustrated about that. But we need a truck and I, I'm almost ready to just, you know, say, sorry, Peter, you're gonna have to drive an automatic.
I mean, you'll get used to it, you know.
Everybody is, yeah, that's what we're, that's what all we have now is.
The new truck is, is a automatic, right? The, our newer truck?
Yes, yes, the twenty twenty-four.
I mean, I was, I was fifty years without driving an automatic and I had to change, and I did, you know.
Yeah, no, it's unfortunate that, you know, change is upon us and we have to adapt.
So we also have to-
Just like the computer world. How many of us in this room didn't wanna change the computers, but now everybody's own one.
Yeah.
It's a new hip pocket or something, luckily enough, you have to have it.
Guess we'll leave that. I, I feel like that can be something you decide.
Yeah, no, I wanna move on that. At the same point, a question for Lily is, is that money available in the event I need a check to buy the trailer or to, you know?
How much, with, with that truck, how much are we looking at right now?
The truck is around two hundred thousand.
The truck. Oh, wait, you're asking specifically about the trailer?
The trailer more importantly.
More importantly than the trailer.
That's a bigger deal. It'll be, you will be very much involved with the dealer with that when that happens.
Okay.
But the trailer, I'm probably gonna drive up there with one of our trucks, hook it up, and drive it away.
So the trailer is just under the general fund, it's not out of the-
We've got about a hundred and fifty-three K in the HERF fund right now. Um, and then we'll be adding upwards of, or in the budget, we have a transfer out of the highway of about ninety thousand dollars. So I think we'll have, if we wanna use the HERF for the trailer, then I think-
No, I don't think you wanna use the HERF for the trailer, cause we've got the trailer budgeted already in the fund.
Okay.
In the highway fund.
Yeah.
We've got the ten thousand dollars.
If I, if I just get an invoice or a personal sales agreement from the company, whichever I choose to, you can just write a check and I think we'll-
Essentially, yeah.
Right?
Yes, yeah, yep, as long as it's, you know, for proof, then, yeah.
It is. They just proved the, they've already proved ten thousand dollars for the trailer. Now it just has to run for a bit more to cover the added expenses of-
But it'll just be a line item that goes over budget like so many others.
Yep, exactly. We'll be fine.
So the extra ninety thousand dollars for the HERF, you could put it in today if you had it, but we don't. So that's why you're waiting until, I mean, as of July one, that ninety thousand dollars is available, right? But we don't have it because we don't have taxes yet.
Yes.
So that's why it has to be done.
Okay, uh, that's all I've got. Any questions on roads?
No, nice job.
We're trying to grade where we can. If somebody complains about a particular road, we jump on it. I wasn't looking for complaints.
I was gonna speak in a different subject.
So, yeah, I mean, there's, we're trying to keep up with all of it and it's, it becomes, you know, with this juggling of, you know, one grant to the next grant and then the, the mitigation projects, there's just, that wiggles around, moves around. Yeah, but it's a busy time of year and I wouldn't have it any other way.
Were you able to look at the tree on the county road?
I did not get there today, but I will, I will make it happen tomorrow.
Okay.
The what?
A tree on the county road.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Abby.
Yeah, yeah, we had the, just one more thing, the, the five fifty gave us troubles again. I brought it out to Lemoine Valley Ford, they sent it home this morning and it's still doing the same thing. So I called them, it's going back to them. It's a weird thing. It's the, the, you pull the shift and lever out and it won't, it either locks in or it's like the, it's like it doesn't, read that it's in neutral or that it's in park, so it won't, won't start, it won't, it's like. So they changed the steering column. They were thinking that was it, but clearly it's not. So it's going back to them, hopefully they're-
Remind me how old that is?
That's two thousand seventeen.
And how do you-
We bought it secondhand, yes.
And how do you get that out there?
Uh, well, we, we put our mechanical abilities together and we pulled part of it apart. There's a little, there's a little button in there if you pull out, which releases the, the lock mechanism. And we send it.
Okay, so you don't have to trailer it out on your deep pump trailer?
We didn't have to before, we were able to, you know. In fact, I drove it for a few days that way, just was waiting for an appointment, but. Just to keep you updated.
Thank you.
That's right.
All right, Lily, down to business. Thank you for waiting on this.
Oh, yeah.
Take a second if you wanna take a second to get yourself.
Yes, I'm gonna grab some water and get this one up.
Guys, thank you. Welcome. All of you, thank you. Appreciate it.
We will.
So we got your, I got your email that things have changed a little bit, right?
Yes, things have changed a little bit. Um, so, I'll just get this pulled up, sorry, of it.
I don't have that email in front of me though, but.
Oh, it's on the backside of the-
Great.
Um, so number five, um, so basically our tax rate discussion continued. Um, what I found for the rate appraisal fund after talking more with, um, Nimerick and RB Technology, um, it was a lot less than I had anticipated, what we could use. Um, so I was able to do about thirteen thousand in FY twenty-five that we can then carry over into FY twenty-six. And then, um, fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-one that we will most likely be able to use in, um, FY twenty-six.
What was the number we had had that we were trying to target? Was it thirty thousand? I can't remember now, or forty?
More, closer to forty, yes.
So it's not valid for us. I mean, it's twenty-seven thousand instead of forty.
Good research though, keeping us out of trouble.
What was that?
You're keeping us out of trouble.
As much as I can, yes. Um, so, and then there was a minor, um, error related to the cemetery funds, um, on my spreadsheet that we fixed. Um, so with the FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six rate appraisal funds applied, um, we're looking at a point seven eight six tax rate.
The cemetery shouldn't have anything to do with that, does it? The cemetery fund?
Well, yes, because we, we give money to the cemetery funds, or to the cemetery fund each year for that.
We still have to raise taxes for it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so this is about a ten percent increase from FY twenty-four, a twenty-four percent increase from FY twenty-five. Um, when we had left last meeting, we were looking at a four percent increase year over year. We hadn't dropped the tax rate last year. Um, this is more so a, a five percent increase year over year, which, um-
A what? Say that again, a five what?
Five percent increase year over year, um.
I'm sorry, I was trying to find my other sheet of calculations. Can you say that again?
Yes, so, um, how far back do you want? You want me to?
Corrections and adjustments.
Great, yep. Um, so with the change, um, in the cemetery funds appropriation and the FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six rate appraisal funds applied, um, we're looking at a point seven eight six tax rate. This is a ten percent increase from FY twenty-four and a twenty-four percent increase from FY twenty-five.
Twenty-four percent.
How would we have an error in the cemetery fund if the voters voted on that?
I know, it seems like it's just one amount.
It was a mistype essentially is what it was.
Cemetery.
See if you can figure it out.
Seven, seven, seven point seven eight six. From last year.
The appropriation for this year was ten thousand for the cemetery fund.
And we had it in as something else?
Yes. I did, in my tax rate calculation sheet. That was, yeah.
So this is kinda like where we're, I mean, this is, this is what we have to do?
Right.
Um, because it was a bit of an increase, I did go over again the budget to see where we could potentially, discuss dropping some funds. Um, we got a consulting fee, um, that was seventy-five hundred. Historically, we haven't really spent more than five hundred dollars, um.
And we, I couldn't remember, and she probably wasn't involved, of what that was for. And she thought maybe it was when we were talking about having to hire somebody for the training.
I agree, cause that is exactly what we have for.
So Brandy's, um, uh, the work that she does, it comes out of the assistant treasurer and assistant clerk item line. Um, so it's not really coming out of this item line. And I know when I was brought on and it was discussed, uh, that Brandy was going to be training me. We really said that the majority of the work was going to be done in FY twenty-five. Um, and not so much in FY twenty-six. I think that there's a potential to drop that a little bit. I would say, um, after speaking with Brandy, after this tax season is done and through, she'll be more like a phone call or a consultant when I need one or can't figure something out on my own.
So she wanna, so she's talking about going back to consulting from being on the payroll?
Well, it would, she would still be on the payroll, but I would be using her more as a-
Referral, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and not so much in the office consistently.
She would still be charging the same hourly rate that she was charging?
I think that that makes a lot of sense if you're comfortable with.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um.
What would you recommend we reduce it to?
I mean, I would say she did do a lot of work, um, and we were above, um, what we wanted to be, um, for our wages versus the treasurer clerk last year. I would say safely, we could probably do like, let's remove three thousand dollars from there.
I don't, I don't see why even that. You said historically it's been less than five hundred dollars, so unless-
But we also have-
We've got a separate line for, for legal fees, right? So I don't know what else we would use for a consultant for.
That is true. Um, the only other thing that I could think of is essentially kinda trying to make up that money, um, that we went over in the, the wages of the town clerk and town treasurer last year.
Uh, I, I don't see how that can happen. I mean, it is clearly, uh, one of the reasons why the general fund was so much over budget. But, um, we're talking about seventy-five hundred dollars from FY twenty-six, right? Versus the, uh, over, uh, the assistant overage for twenty-six. Yeah, so we're talking about the seventy-five hundred dollars was for FY- Yeah, so we're talking about the seventy-five hundred dollars was for, no, wait a minute, I put budget, oh, I'm looking at the wrong thing. Too many things. This is the monthly report, I should be looking at the annual report.
So Diana, if, you, you're feeling, if I understand, your sentiment is that we should maybe think about reducing it even more than the seventy-five hundred?
Yeah, yeah.
And Lily, you were suggesting if we kept a little bit, we might be able to offset, if we collected those taxes, we might be able to offset FY twenty-five's over budget for, yeah.
Yeah. Kind of.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, that's beyond me how that could, how that could help. I mean, we're eighteen thousand dollars over in the assistant. So the seventy-five hundred dollars wouldn't have helped anyways, if that was in the next year, so, okay. Uh, FY, well, no, wait a minute, thirteen, no, twenty, we went over thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars.
So we could put a little dent in that if we.
Yeah.
I think maybe we could do with a thousand dollars for consultants, but I don't really know who we use for consultants. Anybody?
I mean, Lily, if you feel comfortable with that, I'd, I'd be fine with reducing it, like Diana suggested, to a thousand.
Okay.
If that, if that's something you feel like, you know, isn't taking too much out.
I, I just wanna double check here. How much we are, and Diana, you said eighteen thousand over, where, where you, where you see?
No, she changed that.
Okay. See, that seemed a little, a little hefty.
No, I was looking at the next year's budget, it's actually more like minus thirteen thousand nine eighty-seven, so more like fourteen thousand dollars.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah. Um, I don't know, that is, that is a large overage that we had last year. So I would say, if we could still raise some of those taxes, I feel like that would probably be more beneficial for us. Um, reducing it maybe down to four thousand or three thousand or, um, you know, a little bit helps.
Okay.
But it's not gonna help with the tax rate.
No, but it could help with our general fund balance.
But it's, yeah, realistic, versus showing a good tax rate and then going over budget.
Realistic.
Yeah.
Like, it'd be better to just have it all laid out, yeah.
Raise it.
So we don't have any consulting fees in any of the pri, in FY twenty-five at all, so seventy-five hundred dollars for FY twenty-six must have been.
I think it was for training purposes.
At least.
So if we reduce, I guess my question is, is if, even if we reduce that by six thousand, are we really touching the tax rate?
Not really with, um, I mean.
Half a penny or so.
But I guess, I guess my point is, is if we're, we're barely touching the tax rate.
Yeah.
But we might have more benefit in just keeping it and offsetting the overage in wages for twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
I don't see how that, yeah, I don't, I don't see how that, uh, offsets at all.
Is that, can, can I ask, is that?
Who has raised the money for it?
Is that a good way to do it, or would it be more transparent and just more straightforward to lower it or get rid of it and increase the wages? You know what I mean, rather than, rather than at, you know, taking money that's allocated for one thing and using it for a different line item? Would it make more sense to increase that one, if that's where we expect it's gonna be used anyway?
We can't though, right?
Well, we could, we could do that, they voted on, you know, at town meeting, we were voted on, um, a certain amount for an expenditure.
Oh, gotcha.
So we can't go over that expenditure amount by changing the budget, but we can change, we can play with item lines within, just as long as we're not like adding significant amounts.
We can't add to that wages line.
Well, we forgot to tell Alfie about.
Yeah, because that's one of the ones that's voter approved.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
We forgot to tell Alfie that we took fifteen thousand dollars from his culvert budget.
Yeah.
For next year, and, uh, what was the other fifteen thousand dollars from?
Diesel.
Diesel fuel, whoops. Which after I started looking back at the numbers, I don't know if that was a good idea, but.
Well, what the voters approved was the overall expenditure, they improved line by line.
Right.
So I think it's, it's appropriate to move things from one line to another, as long as the total, it doesn't go over the total.
Yeah, true.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that what you were?
That is, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying it like to question, I just, I don't do this, so in my mind, like, it'd be more specific to do it the way I was suggesting, but if this is like standard and, you know, if it makes sense to you guys, then no sense to me.
I guess, my point is, it has, is the option to do it the way you're suggesting it.
Yes.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
It was perfectly fine, because what was approved was the bottom line, not a line expenditure.
What I asked you today was how much money we'd have to cut to save a penny, and you said it was.
About twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So it'd be a portion.
I mean, we, yeah.
And then, you know, there is a, a second option here too as well that we could discuss, um, which is the HIRF fund transfer, we have a budgeted ninety thousand, um, in there for FY twenty-six. Um, potentially we could decrease that a little bit, um, you know, talking with Alfie, um, you know, having that, an extra fifty thousand dollars transferred over would cover that cost of the, that truck.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think there may be some, some wiggle room in there to get us to possibly a four, full twelve thousand and bring us down a cent.
Well, that's, that's probably fair, I mean.
Can I, can I just rephrase what you said so that I make sure I understand?
Yes, yep, yep.
We've got about a hundred and fifty-three thousand in there.
Yep.
That new truck that Alfie's looking at is roughly two hundred K.
Yep.
And we're gonna add another ninety grand to that.
Yep.
So we're gonna have.
Two forty-three.
Like roughly forty to play with.
Roughly, I would.
If we wanted to reallocate that for reducing the tax, okay, thanks.
The devil's advocate is that if the HIRF fund is not like that.
I know.
Right.
Right, starting over again.
And we've got other, other trucks that are.
That's interesting.
Right, so, yeah, reducing the tax rate is, is, is nice, but.
But at what cost?
We need to be responsible too.
Like if it's just, if it's reducing it, but then we're gonna go over anyway, I'd, I'd rather not.
Well, also, if, you know, if we're, to reduce it one cent, I would say that would just be reducing ninety K to eighty-two K, which I feel like it wouldn't make too much of an impact, but to do anything more than that and, and lower it more than just a cent would be more significant.
So can I go back to the consulting fee question?
Yes.
Because in my mind, uh, and maybe I'm just gonna make this really simplistic, is that we spent more than we had taken in last year. And so, especially in wages and salaries, right?
Yep.
So we have that hole that we need to plug going forward, and so we need to raise new taxes, or raise taxes to not only pay for FY twenty-six budget, but also to fill that gap.
Essentially, what filling that gap is, you know, increasing our general fund balance to a healthier set balance, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I, I mean, I don't know, decreasing maybe half a cent, um, uh, tax rate doesn't seem worth it in my mind. It makes more sense to like, pay for what we've already spent. I mean, but I, maybe I mean really simple about the whole thing.
I agree with you.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot, no matter what we do.
Yeah, and I think we can.
The education tax is going to be eleven percent more for homesteads. And so, the total increase might only be, well, this is based on last week's numbers, but they're not that much different, eighteen percent. So even if our town budget is up seventy-eight percent, the whole thing is only gonna be eighteen percent. Am I doing, am I thinking that right, twenty-four, twenty, two eighty-four, two eighty-four.
I need to look at.
What is this a snapshot of?
Per month.
We haven't got any mowing bills in?
For July, um, we just processed mowing bills. So we're doing by period, and we're in second period, which will be reported on next time.
DNR doesn't do a bi-weekly invoice?
John, do you have any recommendations starts?
Um, I, I think it's smart to not try to make one time on the track, tax rate a whole lot. The general fund is drawn down pretty good shape because of last year.
Yeah.
And it would be, the town could be in a little bit of a pickle if that happened a second year in a row, so.
Which is the, so I guess, what, our two choices right now are to say, let's, um, let's go with this point seven eight six. This is up to the board, or we could potentially reduce it a little bit more by limit, uh, cut, reducing consulting fees, messing around with the HIRF transfer. My opinion, we do neither of those, um, but I'll let the two of you.
I'm a part of you, I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Right, so do we need to form a motion to set the tax rate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh.
I'll use it.
I'm looking for the number on here so I won't see it wrong, um, point seven eight six.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to set the tax rate, uh, for twenty twenty-six at point seven eight six.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of setting the twenty, twenty-six tax rate at point seven eight six, please say.
Municipal tax rate.
Municipal tax rate at point seven eight six, please say aye.
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 Motion passes, and we have, so the tax rate, thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, that was.
Of course.
Hard to mistake.
Before we completely move on, just two other things, I wanna give a shout out for next, um, meeting, we'll be, I'll be bringing you guys the winter FY twenty-six fuel bid, um, to get approval on and sent off, and then, um, I'll be talking about the CBRPC emergency, emergency mutual aid agreement, um, which is, um, a new agreement, uh, that I found out about on Monday, these cows were talking about it with their board, um, last night, or tonight. Um, and I need to get a, a little bit more information on it, um, before we meet you guys, but I'll be bringing it next, next meeting.
Great.
So.
Thank you.
Or Michael Gray will have something to say about that.
What?
I, I, um.
Cause it's a regional committee commission.
Yep.
So Michael Gray will probably have some input on that also.
Yeah, you want to just mutual, hey, you sure it's CBRPC?
Yes.
It's not some others, okay.
Um, but yeah, I emailed him and we've been going back and forth on it, so.
So the, probably the education tax rate is probably already in the system, comes from this tax department into the.
Yep.
So you'll just have to plug in ours and.
We'll be off.
Mm-hmm.
Go, and hopefully have them out by the end of this week.
Really? Oh boy.
So, yeah.
Well done.
Yeah.
Are we all set with that portion of the meeting?
Yeah.
So the tax rate, all right? I think we could probably, uh, move that bill, approved bills and payroll orders to later in the meeting. Under updates and other business, we do have the road commissioner job description. And Diana, this is by no means, uh, a suggestion that, um, do more than your fair share, I didn't see it. Uh, so I just wanna make sure I didn't miss it.
What?
The.
Job description?
Yeah.
No, 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 I, you know, the one that, I wish I knew who had written this one that we already have, I just wrote this little ad, it's just really pretty, pretty advertised, yeah. But this road foreman job description is like three pages long, and it's pretty comprehensive.
Did you check with Skip Lindsey?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, two thousand seventeen, yeah, it could be his, although it doesn't have his little name, nameplate, uh, border around it that most of us, I can usually tell if it's his because he puts a border around everything. Do you remember Ms. Kate, the art teacher?
Yes.
She did that. She insisted we put a border around it, huh?
That's reaching back.
I know. My father had it too. So that's all, I, that's all I was able to get done today.
Thank you, all right, glad I didn't miss it, um.
I, I know I probably pissed off, um. Never mind, what I said to Alfie.
All right, eh, no, that's okay, I think it is conversation for another time.
Yeah.
But we should think about, uh, putting a timeline on, um, this job advertisement.
Yeah.
Great.
So we're into August, and I feel like we need to post this.
Yesterday.
We need to do this, so, um, so I don't know if we wanna have, I hate to do it, but, uh, do the three of us wanna have, uh, another working special meeting between now and our next meeting, so that we can draft something that, um, that, a job description and put all the pieces in place, um.
Is this what you, Diana, is this something you came up with that you were thinking would be like a draft of that advertisement?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Which is, it's good, I'm a, I'm a little nervous about the last sentence in the first paragraph, but.
I am a little nervous about the last sentence, too.
I mean, I know it's true, but.
Oh, I know, yeah.
Wouldn't it be crazy?
Says on hall always, at the mercy of weather.
That was kind of, I'm gonna take.
That's, it's true, no?
It's true.
It's true.
Wouldn't it be crazy for us each to like, take this home and like, make any edits that we feel are appropriate and then regroup at the next scheduled meeting? I'm just like, I'm like, oh god, we have like this meeting Wednesday, and I have some sports meetings, and there's a lot of meetings.
Sure. Okay.
I'm not trying to.
Yeah.
Shirk, I just, I'm like, come on.
So having never hired, um, having never hired anyone at the municipal level, at least being in this position on the board, I don't necessarily know what would be required, I mean, we need an advertisement.
Yep.
We're gonna need a timeline, I'm guessing, of, uh, you know, when we would like applications to be submitted, do we have a? Are we just asking for like resumes, are we asking, do we have an application that, that they fill out? And then my other question is, would we want an interview, right? And I would think it would be important to have Alfie as part of that interview team.
Yep.
And likely a job description that we're comfortable with that we can point.
Do you have this, Robin gave us these last.
I have those, yeah. Do you have one in particular that you?
Well, the road foreman one is a little more like a road commissioner one, but the road, the other one is road crew.
Is this what you're looking at right here?
Yeah, I mean, this is, but this would have to be beefed up a little bit to make it for a road commissioner. I didn't look at these other things that came from different places.
And then, but we do not have a digital copy of this, correct?
Well, like I said, like Robin said, it's probably two thousand seventeen, it's very likely it was Skip Lindsey.
Okay.
This is his.
Now Chris, did you get the one to Pam?
I do have that one, yeah.
It's been here with these ones from other towns.
Yeah.
So Chris, if you feel like we really do need another meeting, I'm not trying to say no to that, I'm just.
I think if we.
Kind of trying to scale back, but.
Yeah, I don't wanna do it either, um, I'm just getting, like, if we are just waiting for all of our meetings to happen.
Yeah, then we can never get done what we think we're gonna get done, yeah, I hear ya.
Diana, you're looking at these four to five weeks.
Yeah.
Before you can have something higher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think, um. I. Our next, I would, I would lean towards another, a meeting next Monday again.
We might, well, yeah, let's just do it.
And the only thing on our agenda is to write, to put these pieces in place, so.
Okay, so that we don't talk about other stuff.
And we don't, we're not talking about anything else. We don't, we're not talking about anything else, this is all we're doing, and we're, um.
Yeah, I think I'm free, uh, next Monday. I am free, my phone says so.
Yeah. Diana, can you do that?
Yeah.
Okay, where would you all like to meet?
It should be good, well.
Ricky, I'm happy, it's fine, we can meet anywhere, maybe here is a good place, um.
Probably quiet, quieter, well, no, the office would be closed, either way, doesn't matter to me.
We're thinking that you're talking about next Monday.
Right.
I don't see it at the other office.
Oh, she said it's a holiday, yeah, we don't get holidays.
That's okay, it's not a holiday for me, anyway, so.
It's just the greatest, I think, a dollar.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Um, one thing is, is that if you do it at the town office.
Yeah.
Make sure you lock the door, cause if they see cars that are parked in the lot, someone will run while you're coming in.
Okay.
Um, yeah, okay, thank you.
That is true.
Okay.
So just lock the door.
Okay.
I'll make sure this room is available.
August eighteenth, at six are we doing, what time, do you guys wanna do?
It's hard for me to get here any earlier than six.
Okay, let's do six.
And a special meeting, we need to have that, um.
Yeah.
One.
Notice, yeah.
Twenty-four hours, great.
Are you guys all set with me tonight?
Yes.
I, so, wait, actually, before you go, Lily, I was just gonna ask something, and, um, so, not specifically to you, but thinking about what Skip said, his, his thoughts about prioritizing, um, personnel issues.
Yeah.
And also, kinda like what you just said about how, like, it's just so hard to get anything done, cause there's so many things to talk about. Do we want to go back to the two personnel issues that we talked about earlier in the meeting, that we kinda like didn't really, like, would it make sense? So there's the Pam one, and then the one for.
We're gonna talk about that.
What's that?
We just, we do need to talk about that and.
I know, I'm just like, when, like, you know what I mean, like if not now, like when, um, I guess was my question, should we just do it, or?
I think I've got it, I've got it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay.
And we'll make sure it gets there, make sure it's discussed, and then possibly between, like, we're not supposed to have conversations, you know?
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Talk about it, at that, we need time, but, you know, yeah.
What I can do in the interim, um, is at least with the health premium assistance, um, I can try and rework how I'm talking about it, and send you guys an email and see if that, that brings you a little bit more clarity for.
Honestly, Lily, I think if I just sit down and like reread what you wrote, like, for whatever reason, when I have like people that are looking at me, I have a really hard time going through numbers and understanding them, and when I have nobody there, and I can, like, I don't feel like there's eyes on me, I can understand them much better, so I'll look at myself, and I'll let you know if I still have questions.
Okay. I feel, I mean, with this heat today, I feel like I'll stumble over my words, certainly, so you're not alone in that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so can we add, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We have a.
Well, adjourn the, uh, this portion of the meeting and go to an executive session.
Um, cause we're gonna do, take care of the road commissioner, we're not gonna do anything on that right now, we'll do that on the next meeting.
Right, we got, we have a, we set up a meeting for next Monday.
Okay.
Alright, before we move on, can I just, so that we're clear, we're gonna set a timeline for that at the next meeting.
Uh-huh.
Mm-hmm.
Or, or maybe we can come with, between now and that, we can come with our ideas of what the timeline looks like.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll bring my laptop and.
We can do, yeah, we can do some edits to the job, and I think it looks great, and maybe.
I do too.
Well, that little thing that I, that was just.
That was for fun. Alright.
So I can have some?
Some timeline, um, edits, and we should all take a look at the different job descriptions and see if, um, there's one that we gravitate uh, more closely to.
Okay.
And would somebody be willing to reach out to Skip to see if he's got a digital copy of this?
I can ask him.
And I'll let Alfie know that we reduced his culvert budget, and what else did we reduce?
Diesel.
Diesel budget, culvert by fifteen, diesel by.
By fifteen, yeah, culvert by fifteen, um, and, um, and I've talked with him a little bit about the fact that, you know, he mobile covers some, some of those funds there.
I was hoping, yeah, I was hoping there would be more than the culverts that have already been, uh, recommended by the little working group. We'll see, can we, uh?
We can invite Alfie to the special meeting too, if we, or maybe to later in the special meeting if we want, so that we could get some like work done, and then he can come in and provide some feedback for what we've done.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, okay, and he doesn't have to, if he doesn't, doesn't think it's necessary, especially, so I'll get that more, uh, agenda together.
Motion for an executive session.
Alright, based on, how do you say this?
Twenty-four VSA.
I don't know, I was just trying to figure that out too.
One VSA, paragraph three one three A three.
Alright, and we're gonna invite John to this executive session.